Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Good morning, colleagues.
Kindergarten, once again.
Yes, good morning, students. Okay, so the board is having a policy study session. Often when we've done policies at the board meeting, they've taken up quite a lot of our time and we thought in order to delve deeper into some of these policies, we would have a study session. So this one, we have three main policies that we'll be discussing, hopefully roughly about thirty minutes or less each, and then we'll have the rest of the time to talk about what's coming up for BPRC. That was at the end of the packet.
Like twenty-nine items.
Yeah, we're just gonna go over and pull the ones that you might want to.
Well, I just think it's important to point out, there's not just three, but twenty-nine, so.
Oh, no, three of the ones that have been vetted at first, yeah. Good. Okay, so the first one, we're going to.
I make a couple of marks.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Just to begin, sorry.
Yeah, it's early in the morning, so.
Good morning.
Dr. McGee, morning.
I moved my seat over here. Maybe I should not have done that.
No, I'm glad you did.
I like to see everyone's face this morning.
Welcome.
Welcome. First of all, I want to introduce Comey. I think you've all met her at some point. Comey is our legal analysis, anal- analysis for the PRA, and Ashley, tonight, we're gonna show some of her, show off some of her great work. But she's going to be not just staffing the policy committee from here on out, taking the minutes, she's also going to be doing the minutes for a regular board meeting. So we are really appreciate your support and help and all that, and you will enjoy working with her as much as I have these last few months. She's a great attention to detail and a legal mind as well. I would, but I didn't know how to pronounce it correctly, so Comey, I'm gonna, what's it? How do you, can you give us your, how to pronounce your last name? I'm sorry.
Shaqin.
Oh, gosh. Okay, thank you.
Shaqin.
Thank you so much, Max. That's really kind of another.
Yeah, good. So, thank you. So in this, as our board president said, in this policy workshop, we'll be discussing issues related to these three policies. And I have a board member requested a handout on the first one, so I'm gonna pass that down right now. But let me, I have to apologize because I, we were not clear enough, or I was, I'll say I was not clear enough, when I wrote the cover memo, and just wanted to clarify the CSBA update, update part. First, we received the two packets in there last week, and why did they come so late? Because we were, we had not paid the bill yet for Gamut Online, so we don't get the policies automatically unless you're either Gamut Online or Agenda Online. So as soon as we paid the bill, then we were able to get these, but they came in last week. So we just, we, and now we're back and we'll get them on the regular updated basis as we always have. And so we really did not even have time to put together our usual matrix, but I just want to reiterate that the purpose today is so that of these twenty-nine, that we identify those that we want the board to discuss and provide direction for staff and BPRC prior to staff work and BPRC discussion. So the idea would be to go through and highlight those that you would like to have brought back to the board. We could do some in October, some in November, have that preliminary discussion, then send them off to the, the staff and to the, following that to BPRC. Then they would be brought back to the board again for the January tenth policy workshop.
And then I have a question.
And then after that, it would go on through the board approval process.
Sheets, is everything that CSBA has sent us then to date, there's been no culling of anything, this is everything they have.
That is, that's everything they sent. There's been no culling, we didn't take anything out.
Okay.
Because we wanted you to have that, you know.
And I, you know I like that.
I do, I know you do.
And, and in terms of the clearinghouse of CSBA items.
Right.
Are we up to date with the last packet even before July?
That I'll have to check on.
Okay.
I think we are, but I don't know for sure, so we'll, we'll need to, you know, Comey can check with Monica on that.
Okay, and, and the reason I ask, not only do we need to, but the reason we really do have these additional board meetings is try to get up to date.
Right.
So, so delighted Comey's here and we're obviously so delighted Monica's here, but we had gotten behind.
Yes, we did.
Because they are voluminous, so to the extent we can do that, that's great. I just need to know where we're at, and, thank you, you'll check on that, and, and if there is anything in, that is in the backlog, maybe we'll just have to be brought up to speed that there is a backlog and where we at.
Okay, we'll be sure we do that.
So we have traditionally, or, and we've talked about this as a board, had a grid when we get new things from CSBA. The grid, as we had used it, gave a summary of the new policy suggestion, which you have here, although I find these very hard to understand. And just a note from a staff member who would be an expert in that area, seeing whether they thought this was a policy we should go forward with or not, or we should, going to BPRC or not, in a grid, are we going to get that?
You'll have that on the October, that'll be on the October eighteenth meeting.
Okay.
That matrix or grid, whatever we want to call it.
So this, this will, all of these will be on a grid like that, or you'll?
We'd like to highlight, yeah, well, we can put, we'll put them all on the grid, but again, we want to know today, ideally if we have time, which ones the board members would like to discuss, even before they go to the staff and BPRC and opine on, frankly.
Okay, I, I think that may not, we could do that as this process this time, but I, I'm not sure that's our most effective process going forward, because, again, there are staff members that have expertise here, it would be nice for them to give us a little more context on some of the, I mean, obviously, we're not, we don't have any Title I program improvement schools, so I would assume.
Actually, we, we do have schools. We have five schools that receive Title I funds.
But, but not program improvement? Do we have program improvement schools?
No, program, not on program improvement.
So, I mean, some of these I can look at and say whether they're.
Oh, is, I don't know if they're program improvement.
These are on program improvement, or at least the first one here is. My point is, not on a specific one, is, is, I would like to see that matrix, I would like to have the option as a board member to ask for things to be discussed at a board meeting before BPRC. After I see this matrix, I feel like going in with these paragraphs isn't the best way for me to provide guidance as a board member.
I'll do whatever the board wishes on this, so.
Can I have two cents on this? Once I knew what we were doing with this, I found this helpful. So I had to go through a mind shift because I thought I was doing final, so I have a list of the questions that I presume we'll go through today that staff can address.
Exactly.
And so my suggestion is, we kind of feel it out. I like a matrix too, that's what I was looking for, but I don't mind, you know, I like the matrix because you can go back in the past and see what we've all done, but now that I know what we're doing, I, I can work on this.
All right.
I've got my questions.
So this is, we're gonna talk about the.
I don't think your mic is on.
We're gonna talk about the policy, these, this list, and the ones that you specifically mentioned in the item that comes at the end of this meeting, is that right?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we'll start with, okay, thank you, and.
Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
Dr. McGee.
So I think we should begin with the electronic communications piece, and this was actually initially brought to us in an email, which I just distributed in May. It came from the publisher of the Palo Alto Weekly, and he had asked us to consider two changes, one to a board bylaw regarding electronic communications among board members and another with electronic communications among staff. We, in your background materials, let's see, we asked our attorney to weigh in on this. This is, has to do with a case actually not related to school boards, but related to city council members in San Jose, the Smith case, which has gone through appeals in Supreme Court, and we had Mr. Freeman on the phone during BPRC, said we expect the decision any moment. We learned a lot of districts are just waiting to decide, others are moving ahead, he said most appear to be just waiting, but we wanted to, and I'll turn this over to Mr. Daubert in just a moment, really hear what the board, the board's thinking about this. I know I related, asked of Mr. Freeman, when I used to work for the state, I'd carry two phones, one for state business, one for personal, and Mr. Freeman says he does the same in his own law firm. But Mr. Daubert, do you want, as policy chair, did you want to add anything?
Sure, I just, so this came to the BPRC as a request to Max and I, as you can see from the publisher of the Weekly. We put it on the matrix, and the board asked that it be brought to the board for discussion to give guidance. We had Mr. Freeman, I think, from Lozano Smith, for a brief conversation about kind of the legal status, so that we would be able to have a more informed discussion. We didn't discuss at the BPRC the policy itself, because we're waiting for guidance from the board. As Max said, I guess Dr. McGee said.
It's morning, laughs, it's just.
I feel like I've come back to the debate last night about what to call people. I'm gonna call you super, I'm gonna call you Dr. McGee. Because I want you to be happy, yeah. So what we learned, and I'll summarize, but I think you have this in the packet, what we learned from Mr. Freeman is that the, there was a court decision that held that electronic communications on private email accounts are subject to the Public Records Act. That was set aside by the California Supreme Court, or it was accepted, an appeal from that decision was accepted by the California Supreme Court, so it's still pending. And so the official status from Mr. Freeman's perspective is that it's unsettled, and so practically speaking, we are not bound, the Public Records Act doesn't cover private email accounts at this moment. And we wanted to clarify that so that we would understand the legal context for this request. This request is to add to our board policies, a requirement that when board members or employees communicate about district matters on private emails, that they forward those communications to the district server so that they can be clearly discoverable and disclosable under the Public Records Act. And so now we await the board's guidance.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Godfrey, since you're also on BPRC, did you want to add some of your thoughts?
No, I don't need to add now. We, we, as Mr. Daubert said, we touched on this, but we were really looking for input from our colleagues.
Sure. Okay, so colleagues, let's do a round and see where we are on this, and I, I think maybe we'll do a three-minute round, and then we'll see, you know, just to get initial thoughts, and then we'll see if we need more. Ms. Baten-Caswell, would you mind starting?
Yeah, you know, I, I understand the concerns here, and I want to make sure that we're following the law, and since the law's sort of moving, I, or the law's under question here, I think the, our, my recommendation is that we take our council's recommendation on this, and I've seen, these are not the only recommendations I've seen from Mr. Freeman on this, because he speaks often at CSBA training events, and I wouldn't be opposed to some language encouraging board members to use their electronic accounts that are district provided. Dr. Free, I'm Dr. Freeman, Mr. Freeman has said that several times at CSBA events, but I would, if we're going to make a change, I'd like the language to come from our attorneys. I think that this is sort of a delicate place, obviously, otherwise there wouldn't be all this activity around it, and I want to make sure that we are able to hear from our community when they have things to tell us, and I also want to make sure we're transparent, but I want to make sure we're following the law.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Daubert, do you want to add anything else?
Sure, I have an opinion, I just wanted to provide the.
Freedom of information, privacy, I mean, I suspect there's a huge number of public policy implications. Before the Supreme Court, I would be very curious to see what those are. The law is very unsettled, and I, I never wanted to, I never want to venture in where it is so unsettled. My recommendation would be to wait and see what happens, and, and then, and then maybe flush out what it is. Obviously, the city council, the county board, school boards, everybody follows the law, so I think we need to be aware of what the law is, and I think we need to monitor that. Changing a board policy prior to knowing what the law is just seems imprudent, and in the law, we call it not ripe. So my recommendation, well, let's see what happens and see where we're at. And I, I am interested in the, in the policy debates around this, I'm sure there's significant ones, but that's my two cents.
Thank you, Ms. Godfrey.
Your two cents and your two minutes.
Oh.
Good job.
Thank you.
So one of the things I think that's interesting about this is that this is always going to be imperfect, right? Because we talk to each other.
Yes.
And we talk on the phone, and we talk at the bakery, and we talk wherever we talk, and as Ms. Townsend said, the law isn't settled on it yet. And I think when we decide what we want to do, we have to take into account the chilling effect it has on our community to just shoot off a letter or a note, or stop you in the grocery store to give you their opinion, and their reluctance to do that if they think it's gonna show up someplace with their name attached to it somehow because, you know, it wasn't redacted well, or they didn't mean for it to be there, or it's just in the heat of the moment. So I want those heat of the moment comments, I want to hear from people, and I want to hear how people really feel, without them feeling like, oh, if I see her in the grocery store and I say it, it's safe, but if I send it to her PAUSD.org address, it's not safe. So I'd like to spend a little more time on that, just as, as a board of colleagues who want to get the most out of our community relationships. What we document, I agree that we want our legal team to help us craft that in a way that's, you know, best fits our intentions and the law, but I'd like to have a larger conversation when the time comes to actually get this documented, what we do with those other things. We all get, I'm sure. Obviously, you do have to rely on the redactions process if that comes into your district account. I have a couple of comments. One, the city of Palo Alto's website is very clear about emails that go to the council and we have a board@pausd.org email address. I'd love to see us mirror what they do in terms of laying out that when you email the full board about something, it's going to become a public record, it's going to be found in this area. There's a form you have to fill out that's very clear on the city's website. And I'd like to see us duplicate that, because I think that lays it out there so that everybody knows that their emails that they send to the board are discoverable. My question would be, some of us reach out to the community. I do a monthly sort of news from the board and I don't send it from my PAUSD account because I don't, I didn't want it to be an official sort of, this is the word of the board. And sometimes people respond to that newsletter. So I want to know the guidelines on then, does every response, should I forward that to my district account and then respond to them? I want to know if I should be doing those newsletters from the PAUSD account or not. So that would be something I'd want to ask our attorneys in terms of any personal outreach or efforts we do with the community to keep them informed of what's going on at the board That's another question I have.
Is that, is that a blog that you do or do you push it out?
I push it out.
Fascinating.
Yeah. So, and a lot of people, when they're running for office, create a database of supporters and then that database becomes, became my newsletter database as well. So anyway, for me, I want to increase transparency around what the board is doing and I'm happy to send it from my PAUSD account, but then it feels like it's more official. So I just want to, want to talk about that. I think there's some questions that are brought up around that. So those are my initial thoughts. But anyway, anything that moves us towards more transparency, I like.
I have a couple of questions. Are we gonna go around again?
Sure. We can do another round, too, if needed. Go ahead. Yes.
I think what you just brought up, Ms. Emberling, probably is something we do need to discuss and have some clarity around. If a board member opts to send a communication out to folks, and there needs to be some clarity on what the legal requirements are, does it have to be, you know, does it have to come from your account, number one, but also does it need to be actions that have already been taken? Or are you allowed to communicate your opinions on actions to be taken? And I bring this up because I think once you send something out, then it probably gets forwarded. And if it gets forwarded and it says your opinions about things that have not yet come or action at the board, is there a possibility that that could have some Brown Act situations around it? I think having clarity on that would be helpful for everybody. The other thing is, when I get questions that come into my personal account, I do forward them on Mr. Friedman's advice to my PAUSD account to respond to them. And I try to let people know that that's what we do. I do think, as Ms. Godfrey has brought up, there are people that feel that venting to me is a private affair. And they don't expect, actually, a lot of them don't even expect me to do anything with that. And I, I would hate to create a situation where people don't feel like they can speak to their elected officials, that any time that they speak to their elected officials, their name is going to be published. So I do think we have to talk about that. Obviously, you know, minor privacy, we take care of. We have a process for doing that. But I don't think we've thought through, what do we do about adult privacy? So I'd like to make sure that these things are all considered. But now we've brought up another thing that's not even in this discussion. And I just want to make sure that we're all in a position to do the right thing. And I don't want anyone to get caught doing something they didn't expect was a problem.
Thank you. Mr. Dobber.
So in terms of substance, my understanding of the Brown Act with respect to public statements, you know, whether they be to the media or via email or blogs or whatever, is that those are completely appropriate under the Brown Act, that it's communication among board members that violates the Brown Act, it's not publicly stating or telling other people your opinion. So that's my understanding. So I think Ms. Emberling's point about wanting a process by which we sort of proactively disclose to the public communications is a good idea. I think that we should do that. We've, we have a, we're kind of halfway there with the communications that get published in the packets, but I still think there's some ambiguity about whether the writer has to ask that it be included in the packet. I think that if someone writes to the board, then, then it should be published. I don't think anybody has any expectation, would have any expectation otherwise. I think that from my perspective, there is obviously a, to some extent, competing values between transparency and privacy of communications. And the legislature in the Public Records Act has come down on the side of transparency. And I don't think that it's, that what we should do is to provide a kind of loophole or backdoor for that, for folks who understand that, you know, if you email to a board member's private email, then they're not gonna, then it's not going to be disclosable. I think that we should hold ourselves to a higher standard and look to the overall value of transparency there. So that's, that's my perspective on it. I am interested in, obviously, as the chair of the BPRC, in hearing where the center of gravity is on the board so that we can understand how to proceed or whether to proceed with further discussion, you know, in our next BPRC meetings. So I'm trying to keep track and I'm, I'm not quite there yet in terms of understanding.
Thank you. Ms. Townsend.
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot more to add. I think there is a rich discussion. I think this should be deferred until the Supreme Court comes down. I think that whatever the decision will be, will, will articulate the conflicts between various public policies, first amendment rights to be able to speak, to speak, you know, transparency and the like. And I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing what the Supreme Court has to say. My recommendation is, again, this isn't quite ripe. Wait till that decision comes down, bring it back around to the board so the board can be a little more informed when they have this discussion and, and can determine whether actually a board policy gets changed or you just follow the law. And I think that's going to be some of my conversation on other matters as well. We used to have a board policy packet that was about this thick when I first started on the board and those items were highly relevant to this community. And people really knew them. When, when the law changes, the law changes and it's our obligation to know when the law changes. Is it our obligation to have a board policy on every law? Of course not, because the law exists and why would you have a board policy when the law exists? And I fear, and I'll highlight this again, I'm looking at the 29 additional board policies that are being suggested and some are just the law. And you think, now, why are we doing this? So my recommendation is, let's see where the law lands and then you can determine the extent to which you want to fine-tune or even have additional board policies. The board policy may work just fine, but let's see where the law goes and it can help guide us. So that my recommendation is, let's wait until, until there's some settlement on this and then come back to the board and see where we're at.
Thank you, Ms. Godfrey.
So, given my earlier sort of contextual comments, let me go back to the core for what Mr. Dobber's looking for, which is, I agree with Ms. Townsend, I'd like to wait until the law is settled before we change any, any policy. And part of the, so you can write that part down. Part of the other conversation, though, reminded me that we've, I think, struggled a little bit as a board and as a sort of board staff, communications around, communications that happen after a board packet is produced and distributed and when we have the conversation about it. That's actually much more, in my mind, a pressing concern. We've recently just tried to figure out how to get the communications from community members into the packet. I'd like to have some conversation about when we all get the board packet, trying to find a time in which we get the questions back to the staff, like pick a deadline, try and meet that deadline so the staff can respond and we can make those responses public before we get to the board meeting. Like having, the notes that we get back are great that say, you know, we got these three board member questions from different board members and here's the answers, but that information, you know, needs to go to everybody at the same time and be posted. So I'd like to spend more time on that. That feels like a more pressing issue to me at the moment, given that this law isn't settled. I don't know if it's a different, if policy even exists on that yet and I hate to throw another policy into the mix. But that one feels like we get more leverage out of that kind of transparency where our community can read that stuff before they come in and so when they speak, they've got exactly the same info we have. So sorry for the non sequitur there, but I think that might be higher on my list to deal with.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Godfrey. So to Mr. Dobber's point, I think we have, as a board, experienced that there's more legislative decisions coming down towards transparency. Even personnel files and things that we've put in personnel files are discoverable, as we've noticed in some of the recent more high-profile cases. And I think we have to be honest about who is, why people email us in our personal accounts. I mean, not just because we're nice people and we want to hear about their problems, but because they want to influence our thinking or our decision-making, right? And so if that's, if they're emailing us because of our role as a board member, then it's board-related and it rises to that level. So I, I think that's a consideration that we should take up in this policy. We need to be as clear and transparent as possible about the seriousness and thoughtfulness of our role, the deliberations we make, what goes into our thinking, these are the conversations we have together on the board and, and public, the public should be sharing their ideas and interests and thoughts with us. And if something's not working, then they certainly, certainly should email us. And I think if it's discoverable, there's the, certainly the names and all of that identifying information would be redacted, but the core nugget of something that's not working would, you know, be brought to light. So, so I think we have to be as transparent and clear as possible. I agree that it would be nice to get all those board questions and answers done before the meeting. We'd have to get the packet a week early, it would seem to me. Many boards get it seven days early. I think if we had it early enough, we could have a deadline for questions and then a deadline for responses, but right now, we only get it a few days, I mean, two working days before the meeting. So it would be, it's very difficult to think deeply, bring up our questions. And then even questions we email to staff, we still bring up at the meeting sometimes because we're not sure everybody has seen the responses. So we'd have to put a process in place for that, I think, just to add that. But I do think that we should, again, just to reiterate, change our website so that everybody knows that when they send it to board@pausd.org, it will become discoverable. And then I would like the question about whether we can send our communications out to the community from our PAUSD accounts or not, if you talk to Harold. And I always do put a disclaimer on my emails that say, this is just one board member's opinion, please don't take this as, you know, from the whole board, which I know they addressed in the news brief. Like Ms. Baton-Caswell, I've had several conversations with Harold about these guidelines since I'm interested in having a conversation with the community, being transparent in our work. Anyway, sorry, my time is up. So it seems to me, let me just see if I can summarize what I've heard. It seems that Ms. Baton-Caswell, Ms. Townsend, Ms. Godfrey would like to wait for the law to lead us and Mr. Dobber and I would sort of like to move forward with adding some more transparency.
I wasn't sure that that was Ms. Baton-Caswell's perspective. That's actually what I wanted to ask.
Yeah, so guideline around transparency.
I do like, Ms. Emberling, your suggestion that we look at what the city is, has and we put that in place. I do think we need to be clear to people. I think right now, no matter what we do, when people get emails from our, from the district accounts and when they write to the district accounts, they really have no idea if it's being shared or not shared and I don't think that's transparent either. So I would, I would like to follow the guidelines that the city has. Ms. Godfrey, I think that your suggestion is a good one. I actually believe that even if we posted those communications after our meetings as part of the minutes, that would be much more transparent. I think we're, right now, we have an issue where sometimes all the board members see the answers to the questions and sometimes an answer just goes to one board member. I try when that happens, if it happens to me, to bring up the question at the board meeting so that everybody knows what question was asked and what answer, everybody has the same information on the answers. But it would, the process would be cleaner if that was just our protocol. I would like to wait for law before we change our policies, but I don't have a problem with having a new protocol put into place that we agree as a group that we use our district communication account, because this is what Harold has recommended to us, that we, we use it for communicating on board activities. I just think if we change policy and we, we write something in that ends up not being the law, then we have to unravel it and I think that's hard to do.
Anyone else have a clarification comment around what Ms. Baton-Caswell just suggested in terms of not putting policy language in until we have the legal guideline, but developing either what would be AR or protocols around electronic communications?
So what is being, what is being suggested here, which I'm in support of, is a change to our policy to require that board members forward to their district email accounts and.
I would like to wait for law before we change our policies, but I don't have a problem with having a new protocol put into place that we agree as a group that we use our district communication account, because this is what Harold has recommended to us, that we, we use it for communicating on board activities. I just think if we change policy and we, we write something in that ends up not being the law, then we have to unravel it, and I think that's hard to do.
Anyone else have a clarification comment around what Ms. Baton-Caswell just suggested in terms of not putting policy language in until we have the legal guideline, but developing either what would be AR or protocols around electronic communications?
So what is being, what is being suggested here, which I'm in support of, is a change to our policy to require that board members forward to their district email accounts communications on district matters on their private email accounts. So, I mean, the law may or may not end up requiring that, but it's certainly not going to forbid that. And so I, I understand from, what I understand, see if I can summarize, because then it has implications for what we do in the BPRC. What I hear from Ms. Townsend and Ms. Godfrey is that we want to wait to see what the law requires and then make changes in policy to comply with the law, but not to go beyond that. I think I heard from Ms. Emmerling, and this is my position as well, that we should change the policy to go beyond the law to require this forwarding. And Ms. Baton-Caswell, what I think I heard you say is that you don't want to make that change, but instead you want to pursue in some other venue changing our protocols. Is that right?
Yeah, and I, I just want to clarify one more thing, and that is, I feel like we can ask in our protocol for the board to change the way we communicate, but I don't feel that we can change in our protocols the privacy of people who talk to us. I think that's a legal thing. So if somebody emails us and says whatever, if we want to respond to them as a, you know, on, on the issue, then it is appropriate to respond on our district accounts. But forwarding their email to the district accounts, I would like to hear the legal, you know, what law is on that. Because basically then what you're saying is, we're exposing people's names and their opinions before they have approved that we do that. I, I feel awkward about that without knowing the laws.
Can I have two seconds?
Ms. Townsend?
Yes, let me strongly agree with that. And I would suggest to you, Ms. Emmerling as well, that until the law comes down, you take, I mean, it's very risky. I mean, while transparency is everyone's important value, what other values are they? Have, you know, has anyone here read the Supreme Court decision? What are the policies that are being advocated one way or the other? It seems like this is way premature. I understand it is an election season, I understand how political this is, but my encouragement to everyone is to please use some due diligence around this. There is no rush, there is no burning bush, there is no particular problem. And my recommendation is, let the law guide us. And to be, and I understand when a newspaper in particular wants to change the law, people are a little more nervous about it, but, you know, folks, due diligence is essential here. And what are the ramifications? And for the community, for the board, for everyone. And I think it's time, this is one of those things where being ahead of the law is not where we need to be. Why isn't, why doesn't the city council have a rule on this? They don't have a rule on it. Why? Because it hasn't been pushed to that point and the law is unsettled. Does the county board have a rule on this? No, they don't. Guess why? Because the law is unsettled. For you, as a school board member, to decide, or us as a school board member, to decide that we know the law and we have discovered all the ramifications would be a little presumptuous. I think sometimes you take the time necessary to get others leading. So my recommendation, again, would be, and I appreciate, I just want to call out the notion that we have a two-meeting rule. So if there's questions that, you know, I, there's always that balance between getting the board packet a week early, well, everything's not ripe yet because things are still in decision-making. So you want to get as much information as you can to that first meeting. And it is stunning to most people and most boards in the state of California, we have a two-meeting rule on every action. Do you realize we are unique in that regard? Our transparency is 100% more than just about every school district in the state of California. So I think you need to weigh how this district is so far ahead and has been so far ahead of the rest of the state in terms of transparency, decision-making, stuff in the packet. So I think you have to be very careful about something that is still changing law. And my recommendation, again, would be, there is no reason that you can't wait until that decision comes down. So Dr. McGee, do we know when that decision is coming down?
I, I certainly don't. And Mr. Freeman does know, he said it could be any day, any week. I, I think they expect it momentarily, but they have been for a while, so.
Okay.
I, I really don't know. You know, one, one thing I did want to point out is, we talked, because we talked about this as a leadership team, how this impacted us, and we may just go back to using the telephone more. And I, I would encourage, I mean, I got stopped at Safeway last night, so it, it happens to all of us. But, but frankly, I encourage, I, I try to pick up the phone, encourage people if they have something that they don't want to put, they don't, that they're worried about, then let's, let's have a conversation about it. And so I, I hope that whatever we decide does not put a chilling effect on this. But I think we've gotten so reliant on emails. And, you know, one lesson I learned from the state legislature is there's nothing substitute for face-to-face or a handwritten note. And, you know, Mr. Vincenti takes great pride in his handwritten notes. But you know what? It's an effective way to communicate. And the phone calls, when I, when a parent has a real complaint, I'd much prefer to deal with it in a phone call than a string of emails. In fact, we, Ms. Harris and I are, are known for directing our staff, that you're not, you cannot solve these big issues with emails. Let's just, let's just talk about it. So I would encourage us to do that more than maybe when, when people do want to solicit, send emails and are worried about having their name, just come forward and say what you have to say. Meet, you are so good, all of you, about meeting people for coffee and picking up the phone. And we just figured, whatever the decision is, as a leadership team, we just, we need to do more of that ourselves. So that's, sorry, I, I feel like I'm in a debate. I answered a question and got in my own little point.
That's, the information was important because, you know, if, if that information is soon, then why would we ever get ahead of it? It just seems absurd to me.
So can I clarify, Mr. Dauber?
Yes, I would appreciate.
You had me sort of half-right. Because we think a decision is looming, impending, I'd like to wait. But it's not that I'd like to limit us to whatever the legal decision is. I just wouldn't want to get down the path and then have to back up and do something different if how it plays out has anything in it that we weren't expecting. So because I don't feel like it's a clear and present danger, whatever that movie was called, that I would like to give it a few months, get a decision so that what we write, you know, mimics the law in the ways that it needs to, but then also goes beyond it in the way that's right for us as a board. So I think your position of me was half-right.
I have a, well, I have this practical question about whether to put this on the agenda, and I think the answer to that is no.
Is not yet, yeah.
Right, yeah, not yet.
It's not yet.
I would, I would support what Ms. Godfrey just said, actually. I'm more concerned about unraveling something that we put in place thinking we were doing the right thing.
Okay, so there's two other points that I just want to briefly raise. I do want to respond to what Dr. McGee just said. I think that it's certainly appropriate, and speaking as an individual member of the board, I think it's certainly appropriate to want to conduct business face-to-face when it is more efficient. I don't think that it's appropriate to conduct business face-to-face as a way of avoiding creating a public record.
No.
So I want to make sure that I didn't mishear you.
That was not the intent or the intention.
Okay, good. And the second is that there's another question. We've, we've had a lot of discussion about the board, which is with respect to 9012. There's also a similar change with respect to employees, which I think is probably less controversial, that district business should be done on district email accounts by employees.
Thank you for asking that. I, I actually do teach a class to teachers, and it came, they were discussing amongst themselves, not our district, other districts, about discussing school business on their personal email accounts. And I love having this discussion in, in public because one of the reasons that we created the BPRC was to make things public so that we would educate the community, the teachers, and everybody about at least the possibilities, the downside risks and everything. So when this does come back, I do believe it, you know, should include everybody, you know, in the public school system and, and figure out, you know, what the limits are. And, but I think it is of concern to them, too. I think it comes up in their conversations and, and talking about. And actually, for that matter, discuss, using their public email for personal emails, and which ones of those are public or not? Or once they're on a public email, does your employer have pure access to that? And, and I only bring this up because one of my students had said to another student, well, why are we sending emails to your school email site? Because that's, his interpretation was that was public for everybody, and he didn't want his emails going to a public server. So I think there's a lot of discussion around this, for teachers as well, outside of our district as well. And I think, I don't know if the law is absolutely clear, but it seems to me that when this does come back, this should be part of the frame of the conversation as well. But thank you for bringing that up, because it just came up last week.
So my question there is, is there a different sentiment about? So what we will do with respect to the board piece of this is to not pursue it further in the BPRC until the Supreme Court rules, and then the board will decide what to do about it. Is that, that's what I'm hearing, right? No, and just, okay. And in terms of the, the piece with regard to employees, is that, does everyone think the same or does anyone think differently? Should we go forward in terms of clarifying that electronic communications with, that involving employees should happen on district email servers and be forwarded, if not?
Let's go down the line. Ms. Baton-Caswell?
Dr. McGee, what is our current guidelines in, and maybe I should look at Dr. Bowers as well. We must have some guidelines about this today, don't we?
Just in the electronic, the tech agreement that they signed.
And what does it say about electronic communications?
It's in the packet as a reference.
Yeah, I know, but we, the reason we're filming right now is so that, I, I just wonder if we could just put that out there and make sure it's clear.
And it'll be in the acceptable use policy, right?
Right, so I just want to say it out in public what it is. Do they have, do we tell them, we tell them that they are to use their district tech, the district computers for district work, right? If that's in there.
Not sure that that particular statement's there. It's more about what's the appropriate use of the district, district email, district websites.
So I guess the question is, do we have something that basically says, don't do district business on private communications?
We'll see if we can get a copy of it. I'll see if Derek can run one down, so rather than.
Okay, maybe we can.
So my opinion on this is tied to what we're already doing. I, I don't see.
You don't want to break this out there?
I don't want to break this out. I'd like it to be part of what we're already doing. If we're not, what we're already doing isn't complete, then we can talk about adding.
Okay, does anyone want to change their sort of perspective on that? Because otherwise, we won't take any of this forward in the BPRC. Okay.
No, but, but I do appreciate, let me say this again, I appreciate having raised this because I think there's a lot out there, and I think HR needs to be a big part of this, obviously, and everybody, you know, everybody. Because it's not just this district. I mean, I have students from everybody but this district, and, and they're kind of trying to sort this out. And so it, it's timely, timely, and let's just wait a little bit.
So, Mr. Dauber, let me test my understanding there. Did you say, so I, I like the concept of, let's find out if this exists already in, in what we already tell our employees, and if it doesn't, then we should address it. Is that what you're saying?
Well, what I just heard, I think, is that everybody wants, not everybody, the, the three board members who didn't want to discuss this with respect to board members until the ruling comes out, also don't want to discuss it with respect to employees. And I'm not sure that the current state of our handbook is relevant to that.
So that's not what I.
That's not what you said, okay.
No.
You want to wait to, and if it's not covered, then you do want to.
No, actually, for the second thing, I'd like to understand what we're doing and see if this is something we need to discuss. I think this is different than what is being discussed at the Supreme Court level.
Okay, so.
Yeah, that's, that was my.
That's where you're, okay.
Yeah, but the answer, it would be great to have the answer to that particular question come to BPRC so we, we know if we should address it or not.
Why don't we do that? I think I understand where the board is on this, then. And we'll, we'll, we'll find out that answer in BPRC, and then based on that, we'll discuss how to go forward and then come back to the board with that.
And is BPRC looking at all electronic communications? Because I know we've talked about social media, too, in terms of.
No, we're not, we're, we're not dealing with that. We're, we're focused specifically on the issue that was raised here.
Right, okay. And do we want to ask the district to look at practices or protocols around the board@pausd.org? Sort of district website that when the public emails that?
I think we do.
I wrote that down to do that.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and I, frankly, I'd like to be able to do something, we have a, so we can put more notes from the community in the packet, the, the day of. For example, we just got a note yesterday regarding the, the enrollment and new school item in the packet. And I, that won't be in the packet now until October 18th, because it came in yesterday, but it's really relevant, I mean, it'll be relevant to the discussion then because of the two-meeting rule. But I just soon have it out for people to see tonight, too.
Well, we want perfection. You do the best you can.
That's right.
And, you know, ultimately, people can come, and they have three minutes to speak at the board meeting, and we're always here to hear it. And I can't overemphasize, a two-meeting room rule is just unique in probably the US, but certainly in California, and we've been on the front, front burner on that for years.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next one.
Okay, thank you. So, and Mr. Gold will be our staff expert on the, the next one. This is the gift, grants and bequests, and we've been wrestling with this in BPRC for, on several different occasions now, and trying to find that, that balance between encouraging gifts and, and respecting donors' wishes to be anonymous, which I think is really important. We've also, I think, at least come to some agreement around the importance of providing board notification upfront of gifts that will lead to larger gifts. I, I thought that was a, a fine addition that BPRC has made. But we are still, again, wrestling and grappling with this question of anonymity. And it's important, it's important to the current project, it's important to future projects. And I know we all go into, not just around the school, but museums around the world, and there are large anonymous gifts. Nonprofits get large anonymous gifts, they're anonymous for a reason. And so we certainly do not want to put any kind of chilling effect on individuals in our community that might feel so, so generous. So we are, we are still discussing this language. I'll turn this back to our policy chair, Mr. Dauber.
So, thank you, Dr. McGee. Just to remind everybody where we are, we had a discussion of this at the board at, in one of our June meetings, I think the second June meeting, which I went back and re-watched. And I think that the language here reflects the general consensus of the board. Ms. Baton-Caswell had raised the lang, the issue around sort of future programs that we tried to capture, that seemed to, you know, get general assent, that we tried to capture in the first two italicized pieces. capture in the first two italicized pieces. Ms. Baton-Caswell also raised the issue of including progressive parity in the, in this policy. There was less agreement on that one than on the other, but we've included it here so that it can be discussed and either receive a cent or not. And then the issue arose of whether we wanted to only limit the provision on the second page of this to the PTA specifically around kind of annual gifts that are larger than the amounts that are in our policy. And we decided to add this and similar organizations language to cover organizations that are similar to the PTA in that they provide annual gifts, perhaps boosters. They, we still obviously have these other tests around whether they have a significant effect on programming and so forth, but we wanted to, you know, provide that, that language here for guidance, particularly for the superintendent about how to handle gifts like that. So that's where, that's where we are. We tried to reflect the board's discussion of June.
Terrific. Board members, let's do a three-minute round on this. Ms. Baton-Caswell?
Hi. Well, first of all, I want to thank the Board Policy Committee, Mr. Dobber, and Ms. Godfrey for making sure that you incorporated the comments that I brought up. I really appreciate that. And I still feel very strongly about what I brought up, so I appreciate that they're in there. There was a third thing that I brought up that I've changed my mind on. And so I want to just be very clear on that, but I think we need some additional language if the rest of you agree with me. I obviously would prefer for things to be transparent and for us to know who the donors are, but I do realize that some donors, they just feel very strongly that they need to be anonymous for whatever reason. I think it's problematic if members of the board or the superintendent know who an anonymous gift is from. And the reason I think it's problematic is if later it comes out who the donor is and there's any sense that there was special treatment given to the donor or the donor's family as a result of this, I do believe it creates a lot of problems. And the way I believe we could keep those problems from coming back to the district and the board is for us to agree that if it's an anonymous donor, that none of us know who it is. So it's a donor-advised fund or foundation where we're getting the donation from that donor-advised fund or foundation and we don't try to figure out what we can try to figure, but we don't, the board doesn't know, need to know and shouldn't know, and the superintendent, we shouldn't know who it is. Now, if in the future, the name of that donor comes out and for any reason someone doesn't like what happened there, there won't be any line that's, there'll be nothing that shows or would provide evidence to giving special treatment. I'm very concerned about that for our district. I think that's not appropriate in a public school district.
So you would want to change that paragraph?
I would, and I don't have exact words, but I would say something around that this requirement for identifying an anonymous donor may be waived by a vote of the board in a public meeting and then something to extent that if this happens, the anonymous donor would be anonymous to all members of the board and superintendent's staff. I'm not sure exactly what the wording needs to be, but I think you understand what my intent is on there. It's so that we don't get in a situation where when it comes out publicly who it is, that there's even a sense, even if there's not evidence, that that donor may have gotten different treatment as a result of the donation.
And the first sentence there, the superintendent would ascertain the identity and inform the board?
Yeah, that's.
You wouldn't want.
We would take that out.
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought you said, just clarifying.
Okay. Mr. Dobber?
Well, I support the language that we have here. So the, I think the issue that we've worked to balance, or the values that we've worked to balance are, on the one hand, accountability for the board in making decisions about accepting major gifts, and the desires of donors, some donors to remain anonymous to some extent, and the desire of, and the value to the district and students of receiving those dollars, which contribute to education. And so we want to maintain accountability to the extent that we possibly can because that's an important value, but we also don't want to, you know, harm the district's ability to provide an education program. So, which is why we came up with this sort of stair step, right? That if we have a donor who doesn't want to remain anonymous, then we're fine. If we have a donor who wants to remain publicly anonymous but is willing to share their identity with the superintendent and the board, then we have a process for that. And it's true that the board then has to weigh the implications of the donor's identity and make sure that the issues that Ms. Baton-Caswell raises of special treatment and so forth aren't at play. But that's part of the process of accountability, I think, in kind of public administration. And then the third is a donor who wants to remain fully anonymous. And there, we wanted to have a public vote waiving any requirement of disclosure so that the board was at least accountable for that decision. So that's, that's how we ended up with this. I understand Ms. Baton-Caswell's concern, but I think that the fact that the board might at some later point be kind of called to account for special treatment is part of what the board needs to weigh in handling the donation and what the superintendent needs to weigh in, you know, managing their relationship with the donor and the donor's children or neighbors or whatever it is that is raising the issue. So I'm, I understand the issue, but I think that it's, it's, that the correct outcome is to stick with the language that we have because I think it correctly balances those values.
Thank you. Ms. Townsend?
I want to do more to encourage private donations. And frankly, I think the road that we're going down doesn't do it. So let me start with even the board policy. There is nothing currently in our policy or our AR that, and I appreciate it, the PTA greatly appreciates private, no, we encourage private donations. I would like to see some affirmation that we love private donations. And I would like to change the tone, which sounds punitive and restrictive, rather than welcoming and joyful. And I want to celebrate every dollar that comes to this district. And I am still reacting to a few years ago when the city council denied money to put a playground in Palo Alto. Can I assure you that with my grandson, we go to every playground in the city and it was denied because it was seen somehow as favorite for a neighborhood? Let me tell you, I go to every playground and I'm still stewed that they did not accept the money for a playground for our children, a public playground. So with that as my backdrop, we're not doing enough to welcome private donations. And so for me, I see this document as highly restrictive and not where I would go at all. So first of all, I would not require, we have an Addison gift in front of us. I don't care who it is if they care to be anonymous. That's fine with me. I would strike that the superintendent or the board need to know. What is important is that we use the money wisely on programs that benefit our children and that's the way I want to go. I am very concerned, these restrictives, oh, what restriction in particular? Thank you, though, PTA and similar organizations, that was a nice addition in there. So I, you know, I am not being critical of my colleagues who are trying to carry out what they believe the board's wishes to be. However, I just need to be stronger. And if I end up voting against it, it's because we're not welcoming enough to private donations. There is something here, did I read in here that the gift has to be aligned with the particular board strategic plan of that year? Did I read that somewhere? Oh, I thought I had, oh, right, because I crossed it out because I hated it so much. You know, why would we ever do that? You know, your strategic plan, and if you let me just finish my 30 seconds, your strategic plan is limited to the information that you have at that moment. If a huge donation comes in, you tell me you're not going to review that? I think that's a ludicrous restriction and I have others that I want to point out before I'm done, but thank you.
Thank you.
You can certainly have more minutes later.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you, my dear.
Ms. Godfrey?
I appreciate Ms. Townsend's ability to make almost any topic joyful.
Oh!
Thank you for that.
Yes!
As the other, as the junior member of the BPRC, we have discussed this for quite a long time. And for me, this is something that comes up in my professional life. And one of the things that we want to do in the nonprofits in which I've worked is make sure that the money, the actions we take are in line with the values we have. And that seems like it's pretty basic. And maybe this terminology around aligned with the district's annual focus goals and strategic plan is really maybe beyond that, but it's aligned with our values. So we don't want private dollars driving decisions we make. You all know we have a relationship with PI. PI gives us more than $5 million a year, but PI doesn't direct where those dollars go, right? We have a conversation with, we think the district needs and we'd be grateful if your donors were happy to support that. And it's an iterative conversation when those needs change a bit. They do donor surveys so that we get feedback from them to know what their donors who are, you know, mostly our students' parents are interested in. And that's a very nice give and take process. When you have an anonymous donor, you don't have that give and take process. I know Addison weighs heavily on our mind at the moment and we are in a unique situation where we have an anonymous donor who is one vetted by the fund from which they're funding us, which is a blessing because not all an anonymous donors would be like that, right? One of the things is we don't, we don't want to take dirty money, right? So when it comes from a fund, that part's taken care of and that's great. This donor happens to also be very flexible about what we do based on what we think is right. Addison was top of the list to have work done, so this is great, the timing is great. But this is really about gifts in the future. The thing I think we're guarding against is not taking money that's.
There's only been, we've had two of these giant gifts now, the Athletic Center and we know it comes from the Perry family. And then this, and so I'm wondering, and this has set off this, this, I guess flurry of activity to somehow or other create a policy around anonymous gifts. The Perry gift was very different from this. If in fact, we're fortunate enough to get another major gift, maybe it's just going to be a whole different set of circumstances. It won't be like either one of these two. It'll be something different. And as we know, these large donations are of great interest. So I guess I'm asking a question, does it make sense to do a policy that centers on this particular thing? Then, thirdly, Amanda and I are in constant contact with each other in, the latest conversation being, well, me in my car and her just arriving at school and, Bob, should I come? Oh, I'm really busy. No, don't come, it'll be fine. In about a year and a half, this will, we will have run through this $1.3 million donation. This donor has already indicated that they have no interest in revealing their identity. And again, we haven't talked to the donor, this is the donor's representative. We've had no direct conversations with the donor. And at that point, there will be, we're going to be putting this project out to bid and the amount of the lowest responsible, responsive bid's going to be X. And let's suppose it's $14 million and. And let's suppose it's 14 million dollars, and almost certainly, it's going to be not quite the same as the amount that the donor has committed. But even if magically it is, is this policy going to affect this donor? Because if it does, then there's a real problem. And there's a real problem with the Addison community. Because then, even putting aside, you know, the notion of should we do it, shouldn't we do it, whatever, they'll be saying, wait a minute, this is crazy, why are we moving forward with this? If this donor's position, at least for now, is that they won't reveal their identity, and therefore, they won't, they won't do it. So anyway, these are the observations I have, that being said, this is the board's decision.
Can I just comment on a couple of those points, because we've discussed them in the BPRC?
Sure.
One of them is that we, and I think Amanda was here for several of these, we have been careful to make it clear that this policy isn't directed towards the Addison donation. And that if the policy were adopted, I think I've heard every member of the board, and you can contradict me if you want to, say that if the donor did not want to reveal their identity under any of these provisions, then there would be a vote on whether to go forward under those circumstances. I think I've heard every board member say that they would vote to go forward with an anonymous donation. So I really want to make it clear, I think we've made it clear before, but I really want to make it clear to the community that this is not an impediment to the Addison donation. It's not intended to be, and I think in practical terms, it won't be. That's what I want to, I want to make that clear. We can talk about the issues that Dr. Golden raised, which are sort of essentially political and policy as we go around again, but I wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Okay. So my comments haven't changed too much from the last time we had this conversation. I do appreciate that BPRC's work on this policy, and I understand the pros and cons of this conversation. I appreciate Dr. Golden and Ms. Baton-Caswell's, your comment on how would it feel if the board knew but the public didn't know? And what the perception might be around that. I hadn't thought about that, but that, that's food for thought, so I'm still thinking about that. I like the requirement for waiving the need-to-know at a board meeting. I think that's fine. You know...
On the Addison?
No.
On any?
No, no, on any, the requirement for identifying an anonymous donor may be waived. So I might just say if an anonymous donation, if a donor wanted to remain anonymous, then that need-to-know would be waived. My concerns about the donations, I'm wary of haves and have-nots, right? The progressive parity idea that Ms. Baton-Caswell brought up before. You know, I am concerned about a growing gap between schools that have families that can, are capable of these generous donations and schools that don't have that. I don't want private donations to influence our educational decisions or to create more inequity in public education setting. And there's a perception that certain schools would benefit from these sorts of donations and others would not. So as someone who's elected to represent the whole community, I want to share those concerns. I think having wonderfully generous donors in our community is fabulous. I would love to have a conversation with them, or I think Ms. Baton-Caswell has brought this up before, have sort of our wish list of things that we want to work on so that donors can see, you know, where their donations can make the most difference in our, in our district. I think that would be useful to have. But the principles of progressive parity, I'm glad you added that in here. I think that is aligned with our values in terms of making sure that all of our students benefit. I think PI has really led the way on this, and it was not an easy conversation in terms of, I'm taking my thirty seconds.
Even though it, I don't think is consistent with progressive parity, given the state of our other MP rooms on campus, on elementary campuses, and the fact that we don't have dollars that are identified to improving them. So that's exactly, I think, the proper role of the board is when we need to make uncomfortable decisions, to make them and be accountable for them. That's how we wrote the policy, is to sort of acknowledge that. We also wanted, to Mr. Golden's point, to not have future boards have to, you know, sort of explore all of these nooks and crannies of the principles around anonymity when faced with an anonymous gift, to give them the benefit of having thought through these things and write it in policy so that maybe next time, you know, we don't have to, like, you know, build the plane while we're trying to fly it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Townsend.
Now, do I get charged time if Ms. Godfrey answers my question?
Why don't we ask Mr. Golden to answer the question about what kind of vetting is done by a donor-advised fund that helps us feel comfortable that they know their customer?
I'll answer it, although I have a sense that Ms. Godfrey's understanding is better than mine. The fact remains that it's commonplace for financial institutions to offer donor-advised funds. In fact, when, well, I'm at Charles Schwab, and there was an outing that, golf outing, oh, it was great. And the fact remains, not related to the district, no conflict of interest. And in the course of that, the woman that had arranged it for us said, oh, by the way, we offer donor-advised funds. Okay? I said, oh, so anybody can come in and do a donor-advised fund? No, 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 it's only for our clients. And I suspect that part of the reason for it is that they don't want their clients going elsewhere for this service, and then finding out that financial institution X, oh, gee, and financial institution X will say, oh, yeah, and we offer these other services, and why don't you move your money? So the fact remains that Goldman Sachs vets their clients. They know their clients, and in the same way that Schwab does, maybe better, whatever, whatever. But the fact remains that when I talked to the Goldman Sachs group, because I did, they said, well, this donation isn't coming from this client, it's coming from Goldman Sachs. It's got Goldman Sachs name on it. And so that's simply the nature of this donation. And it's interesting, because, and I guess Terry has a lot more experience with these kind of donations. We're in a different position than Stanford. We are, because Stanford is a private institution, and we are a public institution. And Stanford is not subject to the Public Records Act, and we are subject to the Public Records Act. So, I mean, that's the situation.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Townsend? Oh.
Do I want to add a thing? I bring it up just so that, so that we acknowledge that there's different kinds of anonymous money. So the donor who set up the donor-advised fund may not be visible to us, but we at least know that they've been through some kind of a vetting process. So there are these laws around know your customer that financial institutions have to follow.
So this is a technical question.
I'm not going to be able to give you a technical answer.
I think it's, well, no, but you raise a good point. I mean, do we have to know, does the lack of anonymity mean we need to know who's behind the Goldman? Aside from waiving for Addison, let's use this as an example. Is it possible for donors to go through a fund like this and us not know their name? And again, I want people to give money, I want them to be anonymous if there's some vetting process. I don't need to know what the vetting process is. If these accounts are appropriate, then fine. So does this provide, I mean, and given, we wouldn't have, I prefer not to have to waive. I'd prefer a rule that encompasses the donation from Addison if it's through a fund that has been pre-vetted. So I think it would be a way to take anonymity, but have some vetting. And I'm wondering if we can do that, so that's my thought. Ms. Baton-Caswell, I didn't get, you went so quickly, I didn't see how you had changed the language. I don't know if...
The only language I had changed was to take out on that one, if a donor of a gift in excess of 50,000 prefers to be publicly anonymous, and then take out the part about who needs to know the identity and confidence, and just go right to this requirement for identifying the anonymous donor may be waived by a vote of the board in a public meeting. I was taking out the requirement...
Okay, so I don't want to take the say donor-advised fund.
Oh, okay.
But if you think that's important.
So I, so I would like to change the language to incorporate that and try to be as anonymous. So I'm raising what my colleague, Ms. Godfrey, had raised as a possible alternative, and I'd like to discuss that. Let me just say, with regard to progressive parity, we've had that since I've been on the board. Kathy Kryman years ago was discussing, so this isn't anything new, folks, and I'm glad we're all for it. But we've always looked at progressive parity, whether it was the swimming pool at Paly, which eventually ended up with a swimming pool at Gunn. So, I mean, this isn't anything new. I would just encourage people to look, not in the next three months, but I appreciate, Mr. Dobbins, that we have a longer view of this, and I'm still annoyed with the city council for not having a longer view on that part, because I would be using it today like the rest of the world, so, if it were there. So I really would like to circle back to this anonymity. Thank you, the joyful language, and thank you. I would encourage, again, us to go purpose, mission, vision, and values, period, and strike the rest of it, because I think that's what directs us. I don't want to be limited by short-term goals that we have in our, we've been restricted because you didn't know what was possible. Sometimes things open up when money becomes available, so that would be my recommendation.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Godfrey.
So BPR, you'd like BPR to work on this?
I would, I would really appreciate if they did, because I think there's been some good things raised here by everybody.
Ms. Godfrey.
I agree with the adding encourages and greatly appreciates. I agree with taking out the be aligned with the district's annual focus goals. Although I probably leave strategic plan. I still, although this has been a rich discussion, I still appreciate the opportunity for the superintendent and the board to know the name of the donor, because while Goldman Sachs can vet for things that are legal, only we can vet for values.
Okay. And I also am fine with the appreciates and encourages, just to lay that out there. And I would leave in...
Joyfully encouraged.
I would be aligned with district's strategic plan, but not annual focus goals. I would be wary of a single donation that would change our strategic plan. So that's why I would leave in strategic plan. And I would like the BPRC to, let's see. I haven't thought about the donor-advised fund issue. I appreciate the BPRC's work on trying to balance the values with the legal vetting, and I would vote to support the language that the BPRC wrestled with. So...
Can I just share something? Because I, you know I was very worried about this. And I'm very worried about this, because I don't wear there to be the appearance, even if there's not the intent for us to change our mission and values for one donation and for us to make it appear that one member of our community can have that much control. I talked to several different folks, elected officials, and other sort of domains outside of our domain. And I was encouraged, and so this didn't just come from my idea, but I was encouraged to think about the power, if we're okay with where anonymous donation, if it's coming from a donor-advised fund or something like that, that has some vetting around it, to... around it, to think about that being a way that we can make sure that the board is, does not have any of the appearance that we're looking at this especially for one person or one group. So I just want to share that that didn't come from me personally. It's come, I have talked to a lot of people about this. I just want you to think about it.
Okay. So, Mr. Dobber, do you want to summarize what you-
So what I understand, I think I'm, I think I understand the, not the consensus, but the majority perspective. There's some consensus, there's some majority perspective here. Procedurally, I don't know if we need to go back to the BPRC with this, or whether we can simply, you know, bring a draft back that reflects, you know, the changes that we've talked about, and the lack of changes that we've talked about in other areas, and then just bring that to the board for a discussion and a vote. If there's more to be done after that, then we can, you know, use the amendment process. But I'm not sure that the BPRC has a further role here.
Can I ask a question? When you did the superintendent shall ascertain the identity of the donor and inform the board in confidence, did you get any feedback from our legal firm as to whether we actually could protect the, that information from public records?
I believe that we discussed this with Mr. Freeman. We can check again, but yes, so long as, what my memory is, is that so long as, as long as a document isn't produced-
Exactly.
-then we can maintain the confidence.
Right. So basically, if I were to know, I would call you individually, I'd call every member individually, and that would be it.
Right. We would not have a conversation about it.
Right, right. We could not have, as Mr. Golden said, we can't, I can't remember whether you're a doctor or a minister, but anyways.
But there wouldn't be any.
We, we can't discuss this in closed meeting. There's no exception in the Brown Act. But we can have this information, so long as we then don't deliberate in our conversations with the superintendent.
But if we had concerns about it, we could?
Well, we could, we would be governed by the Brown Act. We could discuss those with one other board member. We would be maintaining the confidence in public. So the conversation might be somewhat stilted, but we would be voting presumably based on our understanding of the identity.
And we could certainly talk to the superintendent about a way of having the conversation.
So how would you handle the Addison under these rules?
So under the rules, if the donor prefers to be publicly anonymous, so I think what we would do is inform the donor of this-
They do?
...policy, and ask if they want to be public anonymous, yes. Will you, are you willing to disclose your identity? If the answer is to the superintendent and board members, if the answer is yes, then we go ahead and do that, and then we vote to accept the gift or not. I think the answer to that is yes, we accept the gift. If they say no, then we have a vote to waive this requirement of disclosure. I think that the vote would pass based on everything I've heard, and then we would vote to accept the gift.
So you realize, though, that in that kind of a conversation, let's take the Addison gift out of the picture here, but it's some gift in the future. And if individual board members have problems with who the donor is, not whether it's aligned with the mission, vision, and values, then there would be no discussion. They would just vote no.
Right.
And even though, even if it comes through a donor-advised fund, and the donor is not controlling anything beyond making the donation and us making sure it's aligned with our vision, mission, values, and strategic plan.
Right. That's the decision that, I mean, I think that the donor-advised fund is a, from my perspective, is a useful indication, as Ms. Godfrey says, that this, that money doesn't have legal issues associated with it, which makes me more comfortable as an individual board member, not knowing the identity of the donor. Right? But I think that's a factor in that vote.
Okay. So I think that can be brought, this can be brought forth to the full board with the small changes that were made to the first paragraph. And then, as you think about this, and if you have anything else to add, you can bring it up when it comes to the full board.
If you have, if anyone has recommended language, Comey and I will be working with Mr. Golden on drafting this, so, since it's not going back to BPRC, so.
So you heard the changes for the first-
Oh, we have that, but we've also heard some different points of view, too.
So I have another question, too.
Yeah.
We've heard different points of view.
Let me just say that if, if we think that this is other than a mechanical process of taking what we've heard from the board and turning it into text, then we probably should take one more run through the BPRC.
I would prefer to go one more run through the BPRC.
All right, let's do that, then.
I don't think we've agreed on that last clause in the first paragraph. I haven't heard agreement.
Right.
And I don't, we have some-
Can I ask another question?
Go ahead.
Ms. President? Sure. Please, please. I would, you know, I appreciate this conversation. I would like to see it somehow reflected here, and I don't know how you do that. But it would be like the, excuse me, the special fund that there might be, that this might impact, you know, I want to give some direction to, I want to make it easy, can I repeat this? I'd like to make it easy for people to give us money.
Right.
And so, if one of the conditions that make it easier to give money is to have a fund that allows for some pre-screening, then it should be here somewhere. I would like that to be reflected in any other ways that people think of, to make it easy to give money, that progressive parity doesn't mean in the next three months, that it may be a long view of progressive parity. And in the event that the strategic plan doesn't include building right now, we're in the middle of building, but I can assure you, years ago, there was no building. But if money came in, then you change the strategic plan. Why would, why would we be limited by that? So I'm going to ask folks to think about that, because the problem with strategic plans are they're very limiting. And frankly, money out of the blue allows you to do a lot of things you might not have planned otherwise. So I throw that out there. Again, these are things, how do we make it easy? And if you can craft something in the AR that goes to welcoming, joyous, conditions forgiving, let's make this feel like an accepting document rather than a rejecting one.
Okay. Can I make just one suggestion on language that might take the progressive parity thing, might address your issue? What if it just said, including the principle of long-term, or longer-term progressive parity? Would you be okay with that?
That sounds much better, doesn't it?
Okay, one less thing to worry about.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, so we will remand this for that fourth paragraph to the BPRC for a little more analysis. Do you feel like you have input from the board to guide that conversation?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wonderful. So we're running low on time, but I would, I so appreciate, Mr. Coler, are you being here? Dr. Coler, so, do you want to present on this item? And then we can always continue the conversation at a board meeting.
Ms., Ms., I'm, since we only have three minutes left, I'm not really sure that it's useful for Mr. Coler to start. I mean, it's obviously up to the chair, but I'm wondering whether we-
And I have some basic questions that I don't, you know-
This is important policy.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, shall we then bring it to a board meeting, rather than try to cram it in, in terms of initial thinking?
Don't we have another scheduled?
We don't have another work, well, we don't have another policy workshop scheduled until the 10th of January. We do have another board workshop scheduled the morning of the 18th. We were talking about world language on that. I would love to have this discussion the morning of the 18th.
What month?
What month?
The October 18th, I'm sorry.
You know what? I had asked about that and was told we didn't have anything on the morning. We have something on the morning of the 18th?
Yes, we do. At least it's on our calendar, so, as far as, I don't know if that's been changed.
In terms of this policy as well, I mean, the, we're coming back to the BPRC with it to address the, some of the issues that arose in our discussion right around applicability to classroom instruction. So, I'm not, as the BPRC chair, I'm not actually looking right now for board feedback, because I don't think we've yet finished the work of drafting that we needed to do.
I know, I have some questions.
Okay.
On the IRB one?
Hmm?
On the research one, or?
Yeah, I mean, I, maybe there was some questions that board members had.
Yeah, the morning of the 18th is a budget study session, so never mind.
Right, right, right. That's what I thought, yeah.
Sorry about that, yeah.
So I think, though, we can take up this at the board meeting, obviously not tonight's board meeting, but the 18th would be our next one, right? We can make this an item.
Okay.
Yeah. And then that will give you some time to create a matrix for the ones in the back.
Yeah, that'd be great, sure. Do both.
Okay.
Well, so what would you like us to do on, I have, regarding the 29, I have comments and questions. I worked late into the night to do this. So what would you like me to do with those? Send those off?
Um.
Or are we going to come back and discuss them again?
We're going to come back and discuss it in terms of the matrix conversation.
Yeah, we're going to put the matrix on the agenda for the 18th, so.
And all of these will be included in that matrix?
All of those, 29, will be included. I would love to include your que, I mean, it would be really helpful to us, Ms. Townsend. And then, what we'll do on the matrix, you know, I'll just go ahead, and Mr. Dobber and I can work on staff members to assign these.
I'm certainly aligned with the things that you wanted to bring before the board-
Okay.
-in your email, so I think-
I'll send that out with a page.
You're going to send an email out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, great. Thank you, everybody, for your thoughtful comments this morning. We are adjourned.
You'll see Chris later, Mr. Coler later tonight, anyway, so.